Are you here this evening?
First name?
Norman. Come on up.
Sorry, my first time.
Thank you for being here.
Yeah, yeah, I want to acknowledge your sign that you placed on your desk in God we trust. I like that. Let's pray. Father, we humbly come before your throne of grace. Lord, we acknowledge your sovereign hand and we thank you for the salvation that is found only in your son, Jesus Christ. Tonight, Lord, we ask upon you, Lord, to bestow wisdom, discernment, and guidance on these gathered here and do the work, Lord, that you placed before them. Father, may all that takes place tonight be done in kindness, gentleness, Lord, respect, integrity, knowing and trusting that all things that happen in this place only occurs under the authority that is yours alone. Father, we want to just thank you that we do have a nice, warm place like this to hold these types of meetings. And, Lord, we just ask that what we say and what we do and how we carry ourselves brings nothing but honor and glory to your name. For it is in the name of Jesus that we pray.
Thank you very much. If you would join me in a moment of silence. We lost a couple of members of the community. Ida Perkins of the Chamber has been just a longtime member there. We've lost her. And Michael Davy's sister has passed away just suddenly recently. So if we could just have a moment of silence for them as well. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. And then for the pledge, Susan, would you?
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is our consent agenda. These items are marked with an asterisk to consider routine, non-controversial by staff. They'll be taken by one roll call motion. And if there's anyone in the audience who'd like to see something from consent removed for separate discussion?
I have a separate discussion.
Which one?
It's actually what Republic has been asking me for my store. I'm actually the owner, I'm Shawna, CBD Dependable Solutions.
Is the item on our?
I have no idea.
We're doing that as we're approving of a consent agenda. And I'll have public comments in a minute. That's what you'd like, okay? So if there's anyone who would like to pull something that's in the consent agenda, just raise your hand, counsel. Do I have a motion to approve consent as presented?
I'll make the motion. I so moved it.
Chief, motion?
Oh, I'll second.
Yeah, I'll second. A roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Sorry.
Yes. Councilmember Scripner?
Yes.
Councilmember Pogankord?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It was a 4-0 vote approving the consent agenda.
All right. Now's the time for public comments, things that are not on the agenda this evening that you'd like to bring before the council. Come on up.
First time here.
Just state your name and your address for the record, in case we have to get a hold of you.
My name is Shawna Kerr, and I am the owner of CBD Dependable Solutions, but you can also find me as Shawna S. So that's what I go by. My address is 1121 West Valley Boulevard, Suite G-B Calver, 93561. And it's between the UPS and Donos. So I was very honored and thank you very much for allowing me to open up a CBD store here in town. It has been helpful for so many patients like myself who has, I have three different types of seizure disorder. I was diagnosed with unexpected death of epilepsy. I also have two bulging discs in my neck and three in my lower back. I was a gang pig for many years at UCLA, so much so that they killed off my liver distaste to liver damage. I was able to rejuvenize my liver and get all cleared out with the help of CBD and, of course, my worldwide neurologist, Dr. Suayda, and my OB-GYN, Sammy Farid, Dr. Sammy Farid, and a few other doctors as well. With CBD, it has helped over 4,000 medical issues and still counting. Now, with, I don't want to step on anyone's toes, and I'm very nervous about bringing this subject up. I have had patients basically push signatures at me to open up an actual THC dispensary. And where the THC can actually help over 5,000 different medical issues and still counting. THC can actually help most patients who have cancer, who have trouble eating, who have trouble sleeping, who's in a lot of severe pain, that they need that extra oomph to help them. Now, I did run five dispensaries when I was younger at once. And all the dispensaries that I ran were very clean-cut. They basically resembled quest diagnostic. You would go in, you would wait in the waiting room, and then you would be waiting until your name was called back. You would go get your prescription, and then you would walk out and go to your house and take your medicine as instructed. We do not have a lounge or anything. And I would love to have a THC dispensary here in Tahachpee on the outskirts, not on the outskirts. I would love to have it represent in a quest diagnostic forum to where we can keep the community small. See, Tahachpee is my hometown. I love Tahachpee. I wouldn't want any riffraff coming to Tahachpee whatsoever. So I go to Tompkins Elementary. My son goes to Tompkins Elementary, but he's actually part of the homeschool program. So we are fully moved back into Tahachpee.
You have 15 seconds.
Oh, sorry. And so even if you say no today, is this something that we would be able to discuss, maybe five years down the road, if not sooner? I do have over 220 signatures, and you may take this and you may look over it. These are all patients who live and reside in Tahachpee, from Stallings Springs to Cunningham to Rayveller to Tahachpee Downtown Resort. And with this, I would like to give this to you if that's okay.
You can give it to the clerk for the record, if you like. And... It's not on the agenda to be considered, and even to be considered, it would have to come through staff and through probably the county.
Okay.
If you want to chime in on that, Greg, because that's all control that's out of our jurisdiction, actually, for the control of that.
Right, and you'll recall, the city council voted a couple of years ago to not allow THC or marijuana dispensaries in the city of Tahachpee. So I think that's what you're asking for. It's not on the agenda, so we can't discuss it in detail. But if you would like to set up an appointment, we can discuss this with you, okay?
And just for the record, I will not be selling THC in my CBD store. This would be a completely different location.
Can I ask?
Yes.
When you first presented all of this and that you were, you know, going to open a shop and everything?
Yes.
I thought you said that you were totally against THC and that would never be a problem.
I'm not totally against THC, but it's not a problem to not open up a dispensary here at all. Like, I just want to help my patients. And I feel with it being a dispensary, we can have the analysis right there, where if it's going through homes, they can be laced with what they call spice and Molly and other drugs.
I think we're beyond the scope of being able to speak on the matter.
We can't be sure in that kind of thing until it's on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda, so we can't get into any details of what you would like to present unless it becomes part of the agenda.
Yes, sir. I understand.
Okay, thank you for your presentation.
And I do have a little gift for the council. It's just CBD sparkling waters, if you would like to have it. If you don't...
You could leave it on the table if someone would like.
No, I don't think, if she meets with staff, she can bring it in the staff.
Yeah, definitely.
We're getting too close to considering it.
We appreciate it. Thank you for your presentation. You did fine. Is there anyone else that would like to bring something for the council that's not on the agenda this evening? All right then. We'll move into the regular part of the agenda. Police chiefs reporting, items three, four, five. All right. Good evening.
Good evening, sir. Here's me, councilmembers. I have several items for you tonight. First of all, thank you for taking us out of sequence. An attorney here to help us out and present these items. So what we've got, we've got a bunch of ordinance changes, amendments. Most of these are code enforcement related. This has been about a year's worth of work that Code Enforcement Officer Aaron Price and Valerie Escalante Troche from Silver and Wright have been working on. Again, mostly code-related type items to bring us up to state standards, legal requirements, and a lot of things that we really needed to touch inside our municipal code. We tried to put this into manageable pieces as far as breaking it down into three separate reports here. What I will do is I'll read just kind of the subject line introduction, and then I'm going to turn it over to Valerie from Silver and Wright, and she'll hit the finer points of this and hopefully make it as painless as possible. So the first item is going to be a first reading and introduction of an ordinance revising, updating, consolidating, and streamlining selected provisions of the Tahachpee Municipal Code to comply with the recent state law enactments and provide for more efficient enforcement of code violations. And Valerie will come up and put the rest of that.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, esteemed councilmembers. Thank you, chief, for that introduction. My name is Valerie Escalante Troche. I am a partner of the law firm Silver and Wright. I've been working with your wonderful staff here in the police department on developing some updates to your code to make sure that they are in line with recent state law through the legislature as well as through the courts of appeal. In addition, there were some items to be able to go through the municipal code to streamline and update. So I'm going to walk you through that. There is a wonderful staff report that was put together for you with a lot of the detail. And so I hope you've had an opportunity to review that. Given its breadth and length, I'm going to make it more manageable, okay, for everyone. All right. So for this first ordinance, I'll kind of point out, too, it's broken into three ordinances. We'll go through the first one. I'm going to discuss briefly, I want to say about three to four amendments, okay? So what this ordinance does is there are various provisions in this Tahachpee Municipal Code that covers nuisance abatement. Those are covered by various chapters, and they stem from property maintenance for nuisance properties. It also goes to rubbish and weed abatement, inoperable and abandoned vehicles. It also covers drug houses and chronic nuisance properties. Those were all enacted previously by the city under your nuisance powers in the government code. So what this permission does, this ordinance will do, will consolidate the procedures to how to abate the nuisances under those various codes. So you'll have one type of appeal process. You'll have one type of, you know, process for giving notice, for holding hearings through a third-party neutral hearing officer. And this way, it makes it one more transparent for the public so that they know that they're going to have the same process regardless of which type of ordinance they go under. It also offers ease of enforcement and streamlined enforcement for your staff who will be implementing those procedures. And so it's really a nice way to package it together so you have consistent processes in every method of enforcement that your city will be doing. So that's the first type of overall change that's going to be there. Second, there is also new law on the books under the government code that requires cities now to establish a hardship waiver for fines that are assessed through the code enforcement team. And so the city didn't previously have that. And so this is now bringing the city in compliance with state law requirements that has this hardship waiver process. And so what this does is allows the city to offer a waiver for second and third violations in the same year of the same type of violation when a person requests it and shows two things, a good faith, bona fide effort to comply after getting notice of the first violation, and also an undue financial burden, okay? And so it establishes a process for the city to receive those applications, to consider them, and render a decision. It's required under state law, and so you haven't had it yet, and so now that's bringing you up into conformance with the state law, okay? Third, we're also enabling the city to have the subpoena power granted to the council to issue subpoenas for proceedings before it. So for example, if you have an appeal that's taken under one of your nuisance codes, you'll have a hearing if the violator or if the public requests it. In connection with that, if the city requires a certain type of witness who may not be available otherwise, the city then has the power to issue subpoena to make sure that that person is there. And that's a power provided by the government code. So you didn't have that previously, but we're going to make sure you have that so that your proceedings may run smoothly and you have all evidence necessary to consider matters before you. The fourth power that you're also going to be given and to make sure is consistent best practices across the board. This is consistent with a lot of other jurisdictions in your neighboring cities as well as cities throughout the state. And so your best practices will be to ensure due process is given to the public, right? So their right to an appeal, their right to written decisions. So we'll kind of make sure that you have those consistent best practices across the board. And so with that, that's the general provisions that this first ordinance is considering. And I'm happy to address any questions that you may have.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to raise a question or have a comment? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor, all you're doing tonight is introducing the ordinance.
So we're not taking comments?
No, you are taking comments, but...
But it's an introduction.
Let the council know they're not making a decision on it.
All right, thank you. Any councilman or person, questions, comments?
I have a question. When you said fines and there's a hardship waiver, that would be a waiver for the fine, but not a waiver for getting them to clean up their apartment building or those kind of things?
That's absolutely correct.
So they can't hide behind hardship waiver?
That's absolutely correct. So what that does is it's a twofold kind of proceeding. It does not waive the fine entirely unless, of course, the city decides, and it's just a waiver of the fine. And it's also considered a reduction, so it could be some amount the city determines is fair and, you know, in line with due process and in line with justice. I think the city has been, its history of code enforcement and fines has been to ensure compliance, but not to be punitive.
Right.
Right? And so that's the goal here, right? And so this new process ensures that the city can be just in administering fines, particularly, right, when a person applies and shows proof. And the code will then delineate types of proof that can be submitted to establish that they have been working in good faith. But let's say because of pandemic, their contractors aren't available, right? So it gives the city that power to be able to reduce the fines if there's that showing of good faith, but it's out of their control, right? And it also ensures that there's a good faith basis on the financial side as well that they can afford it, right? And so the city has that ability to make that discretionary decision and issue a decision so that they have it.
Okay, thank you.
I don't want to interrupt your question.
Question? Who would make a motion?
No, I wanted to, I wanted to actually ask a question too, but it looked like you were finished.
The other question was, in the situation with a tenant and a landlord, who's getting the fine, who's getting, who's cleaning up their yard or whatever it is in that situation?
Sure. Well, the beauty of the code and the ordinance is that it allows the enforcement officer to make that decision of who's the responsible party. So for example, it may be a tenant, but oftentimes the end result, right, the end person is the owner. So they may decide to issue a notice to both, to one. It depends on what the enforcement officer decides to do that will be most effective and the most, you know, just that'll get the end result. So you'll have to, they'll have the option to decide who would be the most responsible person to do that for.
So in the case of an absentee landlord, they live out of town, but the tenants are here, and there's a problem here, so we can address it.
They would have the option.
All right. Thank you. Go ahead.
My question is that with the fine waivers, and as you rightly stated, the city's goal is not to cause people grief, but rather to respect the standard of our community. What kind of leverage, if those fines are then waived, do we have to help these folks appreciate the need to comply?
Absolutely. So that is one type of enforcement mechanism are the fines, right? And that's through your administrative fine citation program, okay? You also have, and through this ordinance, it streamlines your other options available to the city for enforcement, which includes on your nuisance provisions, notices and orders to obey, and other such tools. So, and those are financial incentive-based, right? Those are compliance-based, and so there will be various tools available. And I'll also just make sure to reiterate that the fine waiver is not automatic, right? It is a process, and that's why the legislation wants a process in place so that you can consider the twofold, whether they actually have made a bona fide effort to comply. So if this is a violator who's, you know, clearly violating the law, it's someone who's not making any effort, well, the city will have the evidence to say, I'm sorry, this isn't an appropriate waiver for you. If there's no reduction, that would be appropriate because you're not showing us that you're committed to making a change, right? Secondfold is that financial side. So the law also built in some protections for cities to ensure that then it doesn't eliminate their leverage that they do have. And that is built into this vote. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, this time then we could ask for a motion to introduce or approve the first reading and introduction of an ordinance of the city council, city of Tahachpee, updating, consolidating, and streamlining selected provisions of the Tahachpee municipal code, TMC, to comply with recent state law enactments and provide for more efficient enforcement of code violations. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, why don't you read the title to the ordinance, and we'll introduce it by title only?
All right.
Do you have it there?
Would you go ahead and tell them? It's on my laptop here somewhere.
I believe that is the title.
That is.
I believe that's what it was on the agenda.
That is the title, Tom, yeah, for that ordinance.
Is it on the...
Yeah, that's what he just read, yes.
What I just read is... All right then.
It's a mouthful.
Yes, it is. Good thing it was in writing. All right then, do we have a motion?
So Lou? I'll second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Aye.
Councilmember Scripner?
Yes.
Councilmember Pogankord?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It was a 4-0 vote approving the first reading and introduction of an ordinance updating, consolidating, and streamlining selected provisions of the Tahachpee Municipal Code to comply with recent state law enactments and provide for more efficient enforcement of code violations.
Thank you. Item number four.
Okay. The next item, first reading and introduction of an ordinance revising, updating, consolidating, and streamlining selected provisions of the Tahachpee Municipal Code to comply with recent state law enactments and to provide for more efficient enforcement of code violations and appeals.
Este Mayor, councilmembers, Valerie Escalante Troche again here, second ordinance. This second ordinance builds upon the first that we just went over, and so I'll just get right to it. All right. So the first comprehensive change that's being made, okay, streamlines the city's program for fines and administrative citations. We briefly touched on that earlier. What this does is also ensure that the procedures for appealing when an administrative fine and administrative citation is made is consistent with the other amendments that are made in that prior ordinance. So you're going to have the same appeal procedures apply, okay? So again, this is also to ensure that it's easy for the public to understand what type of appeal process, what type of hearing to expect, what type of notices to expect. It will be consistent. Same process with the neutral third-party hearing officer so that there's no concerns for bias. All of that is taken care of in this ordinance. So it streamlines that provision with the other provisions that are also being amended by the prior ordinance. The other provisions in this ordinance is to, again, streamline relating to your business license approval appeals or revocation appeal process, as well as the appeals process under your tree and shrub abatement ordinance, okay? So again, this is to just clean up the code because there were a lot of conflicting processes, which can be okay, but I think in terms of moving the city forward and having a swifter ease of enforcement, this is what this ordinance achieves. Finally, one other provision that this ordinance covers is that it brings the city's existing ordinance relating to graffiti abatement in line with the current government code. There were provisions that your current ordinance didn't cover. So such as things as making the family members, when there is a minor involved with graffiti abatement jointly and separately liable. It also includes provisions relating to the leads and special assessments that is permitted for the city to recover costs. So we made sure that all the legal requirements for notice when it relates to those special assessments and leads are all provided in your code. Okay, so it makes it easier for the public to understand and what to expect, and also makes it easier for your code enforcement team to be able to enforce. Finally, it also covers the situation where a person applies for a business license or tries to seek the approval for a, for plans through the city. It enables city staff to be able to withhold approvals if the property that's had issue for their business license, so if they're operating in business or if they're trying to construct a building as a property, if those properties are, one of two things, not in compliance with the law, right? So if there are known code violations on that property, the city can withhold approvals until the property is brought up to code. Or also if there are outstanding fines or other fees owed to the city, it allows the city staff to determine to withhold until that's taken care of, so everyone can start with a clean slate and that there's no carryover. So it's an additional enforcement mechanism and another way to ensure compliance without being punitive and being a cost issue for others. It's to ensure that, you know, we're going to take a pause before additional development or businesses can start, they want to start any new project with compliance. And those are the main points covered in this ordinance.
Thank you. Are there any public comments or questions? Council questions, comments? On the, and on this one, they have a third-party hearing officer, did you say?
That's right.
For, it's a neutral, do we, would that be someone the city has to hire to do that?
So normally speaking, yes, it would be. And I understand, and I can, you know, check with the police department, I think that they have vetted a neutral agency that handles these types of things.
Okay.
And so that agency contracts with the city with a designated amount, and so they will have on a rotating basis, neutral third-party hearing officers that even the city won't know who they are.
That's a really good idea.
Yeah, so it's completely outside, it's removed from any, no one knows who it is. And so everyone will show up to a hearing, someone that's completely neutral and trained to be a hearing officer.
Yeah. I have a question on graffiti. I'm not sure it's a major problem at the moment, but years and years ago on the council, we had a situation where we could, instead of having it go to court for the minor and have a record and everything, they could go to like a referee and they could do public service to, in lieu of their, for, instead of a fine or whatever, they could clean up the graffiti, or there was a referee kind of situation. Have you ever heard of that, or?
That does ring a bell. That does ring a bell, and I think the nice thing with your ordinances across the board is that the city has the options to go under either the graffiti ordinance that you have. They can also go under nuisance abatement if they want. They can choose to go after the responsible parents if they want. So there's a lot of options to ensure, you know, I think the concerns that you may have is to ensure that there's no record for a child just made a mistake, right? So there are options built in place.
All right. Anyone else? All right. Do I have a motion on item number four?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Scripner?
Yes.
Councilmember Pogankord?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It was a 4-0 vote approving the first reading and introduction of an ordinance updating, consolidating, and streamlining selected provisions of the Tahachpee Municipal Code to comply with recent state law enactments and provide for more efficient enforcement of code violations.
Thank you. Item number five, chief.
It's your final item. This one's a mouthful. First reading and introduction of an ordinance revising section 9.04.030 to clarify prohibitions on sleeping in vehicles on public land, adding chapter 9.22 to regulate the storage of personal property on public land, adding chapter 12.09 to incorporate regulations in city parks, adding chapter 5.44 to... adding chapter 5.44 to regulate sidewalk vendors, adding chapter 8.68 to reduce the occurrence of false alarms, and adding chapters 9.40 and 9.44 prohibiting public drunkenness, urination, and defecation.
Councilmember, Mr. Mayor, last time you're going to hear from me tonight. This is an ordinance that you can even see here in the staff report that you have in front of you. I'd like to characterize as having six main points, all right? And this is our, in bringing these matters before the council, right, when we tried to segregate it out. So these are the final points that didn't really fit in with the others, so they're going to sound a bit different, okay? So bear with me. So the first one that I'll raise and kind of go over with you is the prohibition on sleeping in vehicles. The council, the code already has a prohibition. There has been recent case law in the past several years that has defined the scope of how cities can regulate and how cities can properly describe the proper limitations that can be made for sleeping in vehicles, as well as the locations and times for that. So what this ordinance does is clarify what those scope, what that scope is for the limitation. So for example, no sleeping overnight in a vehicle between a certain set of hours, as well as being near a park or school, okay? It also defines more clearly what human habitation in a vehicle means. The case law had some concerns over having ambiguous language. So this pulls from the case law that gave some guidance on what type of descriptions to do. So it's going to make it easy for the public, who may be sleeping in a vehicle or trying to avoid that situation, to know what that would look like. It also helps the enforcement officers or police that are trying to analyze whether this would fall into this type of ordinance and this type of enforcement tool. The nice thing too about this ordinance is that in recognition that this could impact homeless, homelessness issues, right, it has empowered the city to have discretion in reducing the fines. So the fines aren't going to, you know, they have lower tiered amounts so that it can, one, ensure some type of result, but also doesn't unfairly harm those that are already in a difficult situation as it is. So it gives you a very fair enforcement mechanism and will result in some positive change for the community. So that's our first provision here. The next provision that this is covering is how the city will handle and ensure due process is met when individuals are storing their personal belongings in public spaces. Where this normally comes up is often if someone is homeless and they don't have a place to store their stuff, and it ends up being stored on a sidewalk or in a park. The city wants to be able to handle that in a very respectful way and ensuring that there are proper notices before anything is removed, after something is removed, and storing it at the city. I think the police department is going to be handling that and ensuring that nothing is improperly discarded to avoid any liability. All right, and so this gives the process for that, and that's consistent with case law through the courts that has discussed the types of process that would be necessary. So this now gives the city that authority to do that type of enforcement. Next, the city didn't have any regulations on the uses and they prohibited uses of public parks. And so this ordinance adopts prohibitions, things from no unauthorized drinking unless there's a permit, no dangerous activities, no harming the plants or the natural animals. So it covers everything that you would want to make sure a park is safe. Okay, so that's what that ordinance provision, this ordinance does. The fourth one, there is a state law that covers this under the government code on the regulations for sidewalk vendors. And so what this does is it enacts regulations in line with the state law to ensure that there's reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions to ensure, for example, safe passageways on the public sidewalks. And it also regulates for health-related reasons to ensure that they're permitted through the county. So you have these provisions now in place. The next category that's covered here is false alarms. The city has some issues related to false alarms being triggered where police or other emergency services have to answer. And in those instances, if it's false, there's resources being expended when it shouldn't be. And so this provides the city with an enforcement mechanism to provide notice that if you get, if you're doing false alarms, there's ramifications, which comes with fines and paying the city's service charges for having gone out there for a false alarm. So it's meant to deter and avoid and hold off any type of false alarms. And lastly, I am glad to report, maybe it'll be done with me, the last set of changes that this will be making. The code did not have this before, but prohibitions on public intoxication, urination, and defecation. Beautiful things to be discussing, but these are things that the city brought to our attention is needing some regulation. So it prohibits it and gives an enforcement mechanism to ensure that that's not going to be happening in the city. Any questions?
Any questions or comments from the audience? Yes, come on up.
That was a great presentation. I have two. The first one about the sleeping in the cars, and I, I'm really thankful that we want to clean up our community. I'm just, I'm watching the increase in some of these items due to the environment that we live in now. People are losing their jobs. As you say, we're coming in accordance with the state laws, right? And the people are being affected by federal mandates being passed down now by state laws, and now we want to be in accord with the state. And I'm more, I guess, curious because Christina said something about what do we have to leverage the person that can't afford to clean up their property or move the vehicle or whatever, right? I'd be kind of hard pressed to think what is the leverage to ensure that the person that lost their job because of all this, and they're trying to figure out what they can do in the meantime to let find another job? If the state is, we're going to be in accord with them, does the state have any intention on offering the cities, or does the city council have any intent on offering a place instead of trying to leverage or use flexibility in how they're going to deal with those folks that are hard pressed to maybe have a place that they can go while they're on the outskirts of things right now, right? I've got a lot of friends that have lost their job and, you know, short of giving them a room that doesn't exist on the house, that's kind of where they have. So that's just one question. The other one with the public drunkenness, is that also to be with the events that take place in our public streets where drinking, like Out Festival, Cheers for Charity, those items where people go from business to business to business, drinking at each location? But just because it's permitted now, we're going to excuse the public drunkenness? Or, and it's only a question. I'm not attacking anybody, but I just want to make sure it's fair across the board, but I also have a huge concern for the people that are being hurt by things that are outside of their control. I want, you might be stepping in that part for finding another job, right? It'll break my heart for them, but I just would like to see us. I've seen things then in other cities when we take our youth to go serve at different missions and stuff like that. I don't think the Attache has anything like that. I don't know what an investment into something like that would look like, but, I mean, I've seen everything to parking lots turned into tough shed facilities to pour the potties with regulated hours, which allows people somewhere to sleep to whether or not, right, a safe place. That's really what they're looking for. Yeah, thank you.
I'd be happy to address those comments, but if there's anything the council would like to address after hearing that, you have to come back to sleep personally.
Well, I just want to clarify, this ordinance is providing a process for how we navigate a portion of this, but it is limited. It is not a comprehensive approach to how we would address someone who was experiencing homelessness. So my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, is that this is allowing us to be in compliance with the state law. I believe in fact all of what you've discussed today is of that nature. So this would not prohibit us from, from providing resources and connecting them to churches and the Salvation Army and county support that would, so I just, I think basically my understanding is what you're providing today is helping us to be in compliance, and above and beyond that, it is our responsibility also to address the issues related to how someone found themselves in this situation.
Councilmember Scripner, I couldn't have articulated it better. That's exactly it. I won't add much more. I think that that public comment is very commendable because that is something important for the community. And yes, this ordinance is very narrow to ensure that there's, you know, again, narrow if there's personal property left in the streets, right, that the city barely, and with due process under the constitution, can confiscate it, hold it, so that it's not discarded, and so that it can be returned to the rightful owner. And yes, you're absolutely correct. I'm sure the city, and I can't speak to that, but I know that the city, you know, has a good, good mind, a good heart, and it wants to make sure to do the best by the community and that there are, I'm sure, other resources available and that the city can make available for the, for the public in those situations. I don't know if anyone else to speak to that.
Yeah. Yeah, we do regularly work with, as Mr. Scripner stated, we regularly work with Salvation Army, church groups, trying to get people in that situation the necessary resources to help them. And we don't, we don't have a shelter here, but we do work with the Salvation Army as far as with hotel vouchers, short-term housing fixes here, and then Sandy Chavez provides additional contacts and resources for these people to use some additional. So we do have that component in place.
Thank you.
And I know there was a second question related to how to handle this regulation that prohibits the public intoxication in light of the, there may be community-sponsored or city-sponsored events that involve drinking. I think that's how I understood the question, is that fair? There are exemptions for when there are permits involved, and also there's discretion in place for the enforcement officer. I mean, the type of public drunkenness is generally the type that would be harmful to others, hurting others. So if you're out of business, this is not intended to cover that situation if you're behaving and not harming others. This is intended for when there's a nuisance or a harm to someone, for the city to be able to step in.
And it's, it's public drunkenness. It's not drinking at a restaurant.
Drinking at a restaurant.
It's not drinking at an event. It is, it is, it is the state of being overly intoxicated. So, so we would like to hope that at our restaurants and at our public events, we, people are not allowed to overindulge.
Absolutely.
Any other questions from the council?
Well, in my experiences with some of the homeless, in suggesting that they go to a shelter or somewhat, they did not want to go. And how are we going to deal with that kind of thing? Because of theft, they can't sleep, they steal their things, so on and so forth. And so it's a bigger issue when I see that on, on the news that the state is trying to, to, to address this. I thought, you have a bigger problem than what you think, you know? So that's my concern at this point.
I, I agree with you wholeheartedly. I think that the homelessness issue affects many of the jurisdictions in our state, you know, and I think that all jurisdictions are struggling with how to handle. And so I do agree that it's something, a bigger issue, but it does seem that the city has every intention in mind, not just this ordinance, and it's narrow, but I think the goals here are to protect the community and do its best for those that may be struggling, particularly these economic times, and generally speaking.
Okay, that's it. Thank you very much. Do I have a motion on item number five?
Make that motion.
I'll second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Scripner?
Yes.
Councilmember Pogankord?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It was a 4-0 vote approving the first reading and introduction of an ordinance promoting public health, safety, and welfare by revising section 9.04.030 to clarify prohibitions on sleeping in vehicles on public land, adding chapter 9.22 to regulate the storage of personal property on public land, adding chapter 12.09 to incorporate regulations in city parks, adding chapter 5.44 to regulate sidewalk vendors, adding chapter 8.68 to reduce the occurrence of false alarms, and adding chapters 9.40 and 9.44 prohibiting public drunkenness, urination, and defecation.
Thank you.
And just real quick, so I'd just like to thank Valerie and her team for all the work that went into this. Like I said, this was a year in the making. They put a lot of time and effort into this, along with my code enforcement team led by Aaron Price. Just really a lot of meetings, a lot of discussions that went into this, and a lot of hard work. So thank you to Valerie and her team, my silver prize. Agree?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We'll go on to the next item. Number seven, bills, disbursements and bills for RSI Petroleum. Is there any discussion from the audience? Any discussion from the council? Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second?
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Scripner?
Yes.
Councilmember Pogankord?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It was a 4-0 vote authorizing the disbursements and bills for RSI Petroleum.
Thank you. Item number eight. Assistant to the city manager's report. Good evening, Cory.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to call the attorney. I promise I'll be far less articulate, so, guaranteed. All right. Honorable Mayor Smith, the council members, this evening I have a fire services contract with the county of Kern and the Kern County Fire Department. This has been a topic of conversation since July of 2020. The city of Tehachapi noticed an agenda on the Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting, which presented a fire study for fire rates for contract cities within Kern County Fire, including the city of Tehachapi. The study was produced by an economic development firm, the Nowison Dale Group. They used call volume to determine the service cost to the service cities and proposed drastic increases for fire services. This study unfortunately was completed without any knowledge or input from contract cities, including the city of Tehachapi. The results of this study were ultimately accepted by the Board of Supervisors, as was the methodology used. As a result, many contract cities, including Tehachapi, we hired fire consultant Citygate to study the costs of Kern County Fire, investigate other potential options and ways to potentially reduce proposed contracts of cost from Kern County Fire. So our study results, we used much more appropriate data from Kern County Fire, countering the Nowison Dale Group study, which simply is call volume and employee costs as their basis for any proposed rate. It also showed many glaring cost overruns within the county of Kern Fire Department. Many of those are burden of the contract cities. It's specifically focused on Station 12, which is the station inside the city limits. Their benefit to the region, types of calls for service, two-year history of actual fires in the city, response times, which are far below federally accepted standards, and how mutual aid, the amount of time each call outside the city of Tehachapi impacts city fire protection. All these factors were presented to the county occurring in subsequent meetings. So our engagement with the county, responsible of our study and the city's frustration with the county's clandestine study without our knowledge, the county agreed to abaze in newly proposed costs over a six-year period during the next contract, which is proposed to start on July 1st, 2022. At the urging of all contract cities, the county of Kern also removed their initially proposed true-up clause, which would have allowed the county each year to send contract cities a bill for cost overruns in the previous year. That proposal would have given the city even less control over our fire protection costs. So the county contract proposal, proposed six-year agreement, and it is attached in your packet. It includes the six-year increase in allocation from the general fund. Also attached is a contract fire cost history from the city, it's also included in the staff report. The amount contributed from the fire fund, general fund expenses, and the total fire service charges being collected by the county of Kern's resident residents in the city of Tehachapi. The fire fund was appointed contention and in our negotiations, the Board of Supervisors and the county CAO's office were wrongfully reporting that the city of Tehachapi was paying just $18,000 a year for fire protection, when in fact they were leaving out conveniently the $731,000 provided by taxpayers to the fire fund. That's a pass-through, gets paid on the city, on, on the property tax bill, goes directly to the county of Kern, is kept as part of fire protection. So you can see in the staff report, the last five years of our current contract, so you can see that $18,000 number, which is coming out of the general fund. You can also see what was paid over the last several years out of the fire fund as well to total the total fire service charge. Below that, we have the proposed new rates and the fiscal impact from the county of Kern over the next six years. It includes the base It includes a base increase before receiving total cost recovery in the final year of the agreement. The city of Tehachapi has added to fire fund totals to make the proposal more accurate. We've worked with the finance department. There's an estimated 1.05% annual increase in the fire fund, based on previous trends. So we plugged that in as well, so you can see, in the first year of this agreement, there'd be about $767,000 in the fire fund, additional $196,000 in the general fund, and our total service charge would be $963,000. And it would go up from there, both the expectations from the fire fund, as, as there is some new growth, also coupled with any properties that do get reassessed once they are sold, and then the additional amount in the, coming from the general fund. You can see, there is a, quite a jump from the $18,000 in the last year of the contract from the general fund, to now the 1.27 million proposed for the final year, which would bring our total cost to about $2.2 million for fire protection services in 27, 28 years. We did meet and attempted, and we met with the county of Kern Chief Administrator's Office and the Kern County Fire Chief on multiple occasions, to discuss this proposed contract, rate increases, ways to potentially reduce costs, both in their operations, as our study pointed out, and the costs allocated to contract cities. Now, on the last, did attempt, one of our last meetings, we proposed a couple things. One was a strategic discount, it was a 20% strategic discount due to length of response for Station 12 when it travels outside the city limits. The initial study from the county showed, well, this amount of calls are outside the city limits, 27%, something like that, from Station 12, and so therefore, we'll just reduce that 27%. When actuality, the type of calls and the distance they were traveling, for example, Station 12 travels to Mojave and Roseman. Well, when they're in Mojave and Roseman, guess what happens when someone calls for fire service in Tehachapi? That response time is in the tank, because they're driving from Mojave or Station 13, Golden Hills, Bear Valley, Stein Springs have to come and backfill their absence. So we were trying to say, and our study pointed out, that yes, as you leave the city, you're leaving for longer calls, too. You leave the city to go to a grass fire in Golden Hills, more apparatuses out there fighting that fire as a regional fire department, therefore, the response time in the city is cut down should there be a medical need or another call. So we proposed a 20% strategic discount. This discount was rejected, as Station 12 was described as, quote, "not an essential station" by the county of Kern, and could easily be closed by the Kern County Fire Department. Additionally, previous fire chief told the city of Tehachapi that should be separate from Kern County Fire, start our own fire department, Kern County Fire would not provide mutual aid from any other stations.
Really?
That was certainly unfortunate to hear out of a fire professional's mouth. The Citygate study used more recent call data from the last two years to set a call volume baseline, and the data that was used by Nowison Dale was very outdated, and we used the last two years call volume provided by the county of Kern. There was a 5% increase in calls per service outside the city limits responded to by Station 12. This data is consistent with growth trends of residential communities outside the city compared to residential growth, which has been minimal inside the city in that same time. So we proposed a 5% discount based on that most recent call data. That proposal was rejected as well. In addition, the Citygate study provided the city of Tehachapi showed 49.6% of calls for service from Station 12 over the last two years were EMS-related. Now, we do have a pair of hall ambulance stations within the city, and we express concern with our residents paying for duplication of services. But understanding depending on EMS needs, sometimes assistance from fire is warranted. Trying to lift a large person in an ambulance, there's issued with clearance, there's, you know, maybe it's a code for a, a, a hard issue, and so whoever gets there first, those, those, those seconds matter. So we understood that was warranted from time to time. But further analysis showed 40% of all calls inside the city were EMS-related. While Kern County Fire's operational requirements insist to run a full engine and pull through to every EMS call, remember, that was a factor in the study, and therefore, we're paying for that response. The city proposed splitting the difference to save costs, taking on 25% of that cost while the county would cover 15%, and you could probably guess that proposal was also rejected. The city was informed on multiple occasions that the county is holding firm on the proposed costs, and if we disagree, the city of Tehachapi should start their own fire department. So as a result of the information contained in the Citygate study, as well as additional fire consultants and discussions with other fire agencies, city staff has started exploring alternate options for fire service. However, the timeline necessary to execute other options cannot be met prior to the conclusion of our current contract, which runs through June 30th, 2022. While the length of the proposed contract is six years, Section 6A of the proposed agreement provides for a potential termination of the agreement by either party with 12 months written notice. I think we should be clear that, so there's no controversy in case we exercise that clause before the end of six years, that, that, that may come prior to the conclusion of this agreement. So the recommendation, while the cost increases are not in the sphere of the previous agreement, and contrary to the benefits sold to the city of Tehachapi in 2006, as being part of a regional fire department and joining Kern County Fire, disbanding the Tehachapi Fire Department. The current benefit of the Kern County Fire Department outweighs many other options. However, city staff would like to continue to investigate alternative fire protection options that include a more appropriate level of service and effective cost management by the city of Tehachapi. So staff is recommending approval of the proposed agreement between the city of Tehachapi and the county of Kern, county of Kern Fire Protection Duties, and enforcement of state fire martial regulations, and authorize the mayor, city manager, and city attorney to sign and establish a council committee as well, to assist staff in continuing to explore additional fire protection options during the term of this agreement. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments from the public? From the council?
Someone asked me the other day, wasn't it against the law for municipalities to refuse mutual aid? That it was written in Californian. I didn't have the answer to that.
There is certainly, I mean, there's probably some sort of law, I'm sure, it's a struggle to make it more into that, but there is, I mean, we have mutual aid agreements with the county of Kern on various other emergency responses. It is a, let's just put it, it's the right thing to do. There was a three-alarm fire in Golden Hills a few months ago. When they got to that third alarm, none of the Kern County Fire stations had the apparatus necessary in this valley to fight a three-alarm fire. California City Fire Department came and helped battle that house fire. Because it was the right thing to do, and they needed help because they didn't have the apparatus necessary. So it's certainly not something that is regularly talked about in, among public safety, because when it comes to public safety, everybody's usually on the same team. Mutual aid is usually a given.
And Councilmember Wiggins, I do not know if there is a law requiring mutual aid, but I know that we have always had an agreement with the fire department to give reciprocal mutual aid.
Yeah.
And as Cory says, it would be, you know, a terrible thing for an agency to have to answer questions about why they didn't provide mutual aid when they could have.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a bad thing. And don't, don't bully me. I don't like to be bullied. And my only solution to that is to rise up taller than they are and show them that we can't be bullied.
In that line of mutual aid, though, their comments were, if we were to establish or reestablish our own municipal fire department, they would not provide municipal or mutual aid. That was their.
Yeah, yeah. We will not come help. That's the words that we use.
Really? Even though our taxes support those county resources, we're, we're still county residents at last check, correct?
Yeah.
And if we augmented our fire service by providing a municipal fire department down the line, they would not help. Well, it's a bold statement. So what about Cal City? They have their, their own fire department. Richcrest?
Richcrest is county of Kern.
Okay. Delano?
County of Kern as well.
Okay, so just.
Just California City's Bakersfield.
Bakersfield.
The only two Kern County cities. Now, several went the same route we did in 2006, when they were promised this regional fire department model, and they went ahead and disbanded their city crews.
Right.
For the county benefit of having a regional fire department.
That was what we did in 2006.
Correct.
The game has changed. All right. So at this point, any other questions? We're approving the contract. It's a year-to-year. Down the line, we can find a better alternative, or we can find a way to afford what they're offering without any kind of discussion. This is it, it sounds like.
Yeah, at this point, just because of the, the timing of this, there's not much of a window to work through a lot of these issues. But between our consultants, between our conversations with other regional partners, other organizations, we've bounced a few things off them, and they've come back, but that might work. So there are some creative solutions potentially out there for, for fire protection in the future.
Well, that's hopeful that we can possibly get something, that there would be a mutual agreement, even though they don't want to provide mutual aid. So with that, do we have a motion on item eight to approve the agreement between the county of Kern and the city of Tehachapi for fire protection duties and enforcement of state fire martial regulations, and authorize the mayor, city attorney, and city manager to sign?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Schrieger?
Yes.
Councilmember Pogancourt?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It was a 4-0 vote to approve the agreement between the county of Kern and the city of Tehachapi for fire protection duties and enforcement of state fire martial regulations, and authorizing the mayor, city attorney, and city manager to sign.
Thank you. And you asked that we form a.
Council committee.
Yeah, council committee. I'd recommend Mayor Portem and myself at the moment. Let's, you know, someone else wants to dive in? Just get something, so we have a liaison with the staff and the county?
Perfect.
Moving forward.
Yeah, that'd be great, as we continue to, you know, again, come up with ideas and have a better idea of funding and, and, you know, property taxes and all that stuff for the fire fund, what we can maybe fit both, a more appropriate level of service in terms of fire need, what needs to be protected, and then also cost controls as well for our residents.
All right. I'd actually like to have a, a motion to, to that effect, stating what exactly we're going to.
Establish a council committee to work with staff to explore, to continue to explore alternative fire protection options.
So I'd like a motion for the mayor and Mayor Portem to be on that committee from someone, if we could have a motion and a vote?
Can we do that?
I feel a little bit volunteering someone in their absence.
It'll be all right.
I, I would, I would make the motion for the.
I did speak with Mr. Davies, and he is agreeing.
Okay. Then I'll make that motion.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Schrieger?
Yes.
Councilmember Pogancourt?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It was a 4-0 vote to establish a council committee to assist staff in continuing to explore additional fire protection options during the term of the agreement.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you, Cory. Development Services Director report.
Good evening. Good evening. Honorable Mayor, council members, I have two items for you tonight. Both of them are relating to the landscape and lighting district here in the city, so I'm just going to use that as an overview, if you don't mind, when we take the first one. So as you all are with me for the sake of the audience, the city maintains the citywide landscape and lighting district. This is a special tax assessment. This is not technically a tax. It's a levy, meaning it's a fee for service, on various properties within the city. And that additional levy that arrives on people's property taxes is our funds that come to the city and are set aside in a special account to pay for the cost of the public landscaping and lighting that serve those individual communities. So this is true particularly of the newer neighborhoods in town, because this is a newer taxation vehicle for us to, to keep control of those costs and, and, so from time to time, we are adjusting that lighting, landscape and lighting district. And so tonight I have two items for you relating to that. Most often, we adjust them by adding new properties that are developing into the landscape and lighting district. And then, but in this case, and I'll talk about on the next item, we're reassessing one of the areas. So let me begin with the first one, which is, which is Landscaping and Lighting Assessment District Number One, Annexation Number 16. So this is a condition of approval of tentative tract 6668, which is an 18-unit housing development that's under construction now, near the intersection of Big Drive and Pinion Street. So if you live in that area of town, you've probably seen the dirt being moved around, the sewer lines are being installed now. And a condition of approval of that project was the annexation into the district. The project proposes several streetlights in that neighborhood, and then a small area of public landscaping along Pinion, along the extension of Pinion, will be a part of that project. So working with Willdan Financial Services, who handles our levy assessments, we prepared this annexation. The total annual maintenance administration costs for the district are estimated to be just about $6,500. And so that is divided up and assigned to the 18 lots that are a part of that development. So that's how that assessment map works out. And so my recommendation then tonight is that, twofold, and maybe briefly before I give you the recommendation, the process here tonight is you will be initiating the proceedings, if you agree with my recommendation, and then setting the time in place, your intention to annex that district. And so what we do from here is we then ballot the property owners. So we literally mail them a ballot, asking whether they wish to be included in the assessment district or not. And then the hearing date will be set for January 18th, in which we will have a public hearing. We will open the ballots received, we will count the ballots, and then if the ballots, they're protest ballots, meaning they're ballots where people say no, instead of saying yes. And if you receive 50% or greater ballots in opposition to the assessment, you may not assess them. If it's under that protest, then you may proceed with the assessment at your discretion. However, just to clarify, at this moment, it's one piece of property. It hasn't subdivided into the 18 lots, so there's one ballot going to the developer. And so the developer, knowing that this is a condition of approval of the map, will very likely be voting yes, but we'll see. So, anyway, so my recommendation tonight then is that you, first, adopt a resolution in the city council of the city of Tehachapi initiating the proceedings for the annexation of territory tract 6668 to the Tehachapi Landscaping and Lighting District Number One as Zone 16, and the levy and collection of assessments related thereto commencing with fiscal year 2022, 23. And also that you adopt a resolution in the city council of the city of Tehachapi declaring its intention for the annexation of territory tract 6668 to the Landscaping and Lighting District Number One in the declaration, and declaring its intention to conduct a property owner protest ballot proceeding on matter of the new assessment related thereto commencing with fiscal year 22, 23. That's helpful. Hopefully that makes sense. Happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the public? From the council? All right. Do I have a motion on staff's recommendation, actually, as read by title only already? Do I have a motion to, and this is going to.
There are two resolutions.
Initiate the proceedings.
There are two resolutions.
This is the first one.
You can, you can go both together.
Oh, okay.
But it's best to do them one at a time.
So we're doing number nine right now, correct?
Yeah.
There's two resolutions.
Within nine?
Yes.
So if we could do both resolutions within number nine, as read by title only?
If there's no objection, counsel.
If there's no objection. Is that your motion?
Yes. I couldn't tell if Tom was saying yes or no.
Is there a mo, a second?
I'll second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Schrieger?
Yes.
Councilmember Pogancourt?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
A 4-0 vote adopting a resolution initiating the proceedings for the annexation of territory tract 6668 to the Tehachapi Landscaping and Lighting District Number One as Zone 16, and the levy and collection of assessments related thereto commencing with fiscal year 2022 through 2023, and a 4-0 vote adopting a resolution declaring its intention for the annexation of territory tract 6668 to the Landscaping and Lighting District Number One, and declaring its intention to conduct a property owner protest ballot proceeding on the matter of the new assessment related thereto commencing with fiscal year 2022, 2023.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just for the, as a reminder, council, we do not have to read the title of resolution. It's a good idea to, but we don't have to.
All right. Okay, thank you. Item number 10.
Very good, thank you. The second item, Mayor and Councilmembers, is similar to the first, but a little bit different. Tentative tract 6248 was approved by this council back in '03 or '04. It was the boldest single tract on the books from the time that I began as city engineer in '04. So that's, I know of it back, it predated me as city engineer. So it's been around for a long time. This is a 30-lot development at the southern end of Robinson Street near Holly. So Robinson and Holly form the southwestern boundary of this 30-lot development. So to give you an idea, it's kind of just south of downtown. And so the project moved forward at that time slowly, and then became a victim of the Great Recession. And so staff had managed to get this property annexed into the Landscaping and Lighting District back at that time as zone number four. That's why it has the number four instead of 16 is the one we just, you just initiated in the last item. And so we got it moving, but then it never developed. And so there was actually money gathered from the developer and put into the bank account that's never been spent, and then the assessment went to zero, which was the appropriate thing to do when there are no lots and there's nothing to maintain, no streetlights, no landscaping to maintain. The original assessment was valued at $10,300 and some change, but again, the development itself never materialized. So subsequent, though, to that initial annexation, changes in the scope of city services, and then realized, the project is moving forward now. There is a new owner and a new developer moving the project forward. So we approached the new developer and said, look, you want to make some changes to the way we're going to do the public space landscaping, which we agreed would be wise, because so much has changed in the way we handle landscaping and irrigation, especially after 2015 and the drought and the corresponding laws that came into effect at that time. And then some of the other, the developer wanted to make some changes in the way the houses would be built that we anticipate moving forward. And then the other big item is, we've learned a lot about how much it costs to actually maintain these things, and we knew that $10,300 was not going to cover the public space landscaping and lighting for that development. So we approached the developer about a reassessment of that district and connected it with the developer's desires to change the way the landscaping is done. So there was agreement between both parties to do that. We prepared the studies and reports tonight for your present, for your review. And so instead of this being a new annexation, this is going to be a proposal to reassess this project. And so the reassessed value is, if I can find my... $14,928 and some change is the new proposed assessment value. So tonight, you actually, for this item, you have three resolutions that you have to adopt because the proceedings are a little different to reassess an existing one. They're very similar, it's still going to be a valid process, it'll all still happen on January 18th, so I plan to bring these back to you at the same time. But here's what I'm recommending you do. You adopt a resolution of the city council of the city of Tehachapi pursuant to the Landscape and Lighting Act of 1972, initiating proceedings to levy proposed new or increased assessments in fiscal year 22, '23 for the city of Tehachapi Landscaping and Lighting District number one, zone four, tract 6248, and ordering the engineer to prepare and file an engineer's report in accordance with Article 4, Chapter 1 of the Act. So that's the first resolution. The second item is a motion from the city council approving the engineer's report regarding proposed new or increased assessments with the city of Tehachapi Landscaping and Lighting District zone number one, zone four, tract 6248 for fiscal year 22, '23. That report is included in your staff report. And then adopt a resolution in the city council of the city of Tehachapi pursuant to the provisions of the Landscape and Lighting Act of 1972 and the California Constitution, Article 13B, declaring its intention to ballot property owners for proposed new or increased assessments within the city of Tehachapi Landscaping and Lighting District number one related to zone four, tract 6248 for '22, '23 fiscal year, setting a time and place for a public hearing and allowing the staff to proceed with the balloting procedures. So that's a lot, I know, but, and again, in this case, this property is still owned by a single property owner, so it'll be a single ballot.
Any public comment? Counselor? Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion as presented.
Is that on all three resolutions?
On all three resolutions.
And since Jay already read the whole thing...
On the record. You don't want to hear it.
There you go, thank you. Who is the second?
I'll second.
All right. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Scribner?
Yes.
Councilmember Polk and Court?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It was a 4-0 vote.
I promise that the January 18th meeting will take even over. So just let me...
Thank you.
City managers report.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. So I'd like to remind everybody that the city of Tehachapi and Tehachapi Recreation and Parks District is hosting a blood drive tomorrow, Tuesday, at the Aspen Gym, located in West Park, from 11:00 to 4:00 p.m. So if you're inclined to give blood and save a life, please do so, and that's tomorrow from 11:00 to 4:00, Aspen Gym. Also, this Thursday, coffee with the mayor and city manager.
I should make a note, huh?
Yes.
You should make a note. Thank you for attending. You're always one of the first there and the last to leave, so I appreciate that. It's at the Commons Cafe, which is previous, the coffee mill, and that's this Thursday, starting at 7:30 a.m., and we're there until the last person leaves, as a reminder. And then, we've had a lot of people asking, due to Idina Perkins passing, in regards to the Christmas parade. So I want to make sure everybody knows that the Chamber of Commerce is still hosting the Christmas parade, just as in years past. It starts at Kmart and goes down F Street, terminating at the Zeracoso Education Center. It's on December 4, followed by the tree lighting ceremony with the mayor and council at the Depot.
At Santa.
And that's, say, night, December 4.
At Santa.
And Santa will be there, Mrs. Santa Claus. And so the applications for the Christmas parade can be obtained at the Chamber of Commerce website, so you can download those, print them, and then break them to City Hall. We're coordinating with the Chamber of Commerce, assisting them in every way possible so that they can regain their footing, and the Christmas parade is just one of those items. So I encourage everybody to participate in the Christmas parade and come out and watch the Christmas parade also on December 4. Okay? Thank you.
Councilmember reports?
Christina? Thank you.
Susan?
I just wanted to note that some of us went to the Kern County Energy Summit the other day, and it was, you know, you always try and get one thing out of any meeting you go to, but we got several, and what I noticed was that there's a completely different tone this year. The Energy Summit has always been based in oil, and it's going to run forever, and then now it's 2021, and everybody's hysterical, and they talked about all different kinds of energy that we could, you know, muster if we had to. And so it wasn't, nothing was a final presentation, but it was interesting to get people to think beyond that Kern County is just an oil county. We've got a lot of other things working for us, too, including, right, and we look up on the mountains, we can see windbills everywhere we look, so, but it was a good time, and I learned a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. John, anything?
I'm just noticing, I went up Snyder today, and they're starting the striping finally, and we'll see what transpires. I go by there to go to the high school every morning, so I'm anxious to see what develops, bike lanes and passing and regular lanes. Anxious to see.
Had a couple comments about some of the construction in the neighborhoods. Have you had anybody addressing people's yards being torn up or whatever?
I think you're referring to RACE Communications, the installation of the high-speed internet. So RACE Communications, as a reminder, the entire city of Tehachapi is being gigified, if you will, and yes, they're working in public rightways. Sometimes residents have landscaped that area, sometimes it's a sidewalk, so on and so forth. But as they move through town, they safely install the infrastructure, and then they come back at a later time to repair the concrete, to replace the landscaping, those sorts of things. So they don't necessarily want house at a time, and you may or may not hook up to RACE, but they're working with on our public rightway in Eastman's, but they're required to come back, and I know they have been doing that, and if anybody has any issues or problems, please contact City Hall.
Okay. All right. With that, that's our meeting this evening. We're going to go into closed session down the hall. If there's anything to report when we're done, we'll come back in here and do that. Thank you.